Call to order, the meeting, Angels Camp City Council meeting, February 20th, 2018. If you could please, oh, call of order.
Call to order.
Order?
Yeah.
Oh, I think we've had a roll call, sorry.
We've been doing this home, roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have roll call.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mayor Fallendorf?
Yeah.
Linda Herman?
Here.
I'm sorry, Linda, that's Vice Mayor Herman. Councilmember Bee Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
Councilmember Matildee?
Here.
All are present.
We had a closed session at 5:00, and conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 549, 56.9. Instruction and direction was given to staff. Item number B pursuant to California Government Code, section 54957, no direction was given to staff, and it will be on our public agenda. Is there, on to approval of agenda, is there anything that the council would like to amend with the current agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons listed to address the council. Our matter is not on the agenda. The law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Debbie Ponte with Destination Angels Camp, and I'm here representing Destination Angels Camp, the Angels Camp Business Association, and our ABC program, which is Accelerate Business in Calaveras County. Want to bring to your attention that we are sponsoring two classes through a grant through the SBA, and our first class is Calaveras Marketing Tour, where we have invited Lanny Lot, who is a person who deals with downtown revitalization, and she will be here in Angels Camp on Thursday, March 8th, 5:30 PM at Bank of Stockton, and we welcome you to join us. This is a complimentary presentation. Earlier in the day, she will be doing a walking tour with myself and others, kind of gathering some information about downtown and offering some feedback during this presentation. The second presentation we're proud to offer is called Restaurant Tour, and we are hosting a class at our office at 300 South Main Street on April 23rd, and this is for a class for those who are in the restaurant business or those who are considering it. It's a free class for anyone who owns and operates a restaurant in Calaveras County, or $99 for a non-Calaveras County resident. And this will offer programs and services on how to start up your restaurant, if you're owning a restaurant, what you can do to improve upon, customer service, serve safe, and other classes related. So again, if you're interested, we invite you to stop by and listen in on the two classes. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Can the public find it online as well?
Yes, you can find it online at either AngelsCampBusinessAssociation.com or DestinationAngelsCamp.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we will move on to item number four, Destination Angels Camp, present the future business presentation, which is Cow Waste.
Thank you again. I'm Debbie Ponte, Executive Director of Destination Angels Camp, and one of the programs we're most proud of is our featured business presentation before the city council and others, and this is where we invite members of our advisory council or members of our business community here in Angels Camp. Tonight, it's with pleasure that I introduce to you the folks of Cow Waste. They are the waste providers, waste remover providers, probably a better word for that, for the City of Angels and have done so for quite a number of years. I am pleased to introduce Rudy Vacarezza, who is going to be representing the company tonight, and he will make introductions of the staff that is present. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I wanted to say hello to the council, and it's a pleasure to meet you if I haven't met you before. Once again, my name's Rudy Vacarezza, and I'm here representing Cow Waste on the behalf of Destination Angels Camp. And like Debbie said, we are the exclusive solid waste and recycle collection service provider in the City of Angels Camp as well as the surrounding community of Calaveras County. And kind of jumping in is, oh, is this, okay, I guess we'll just kind of start from here. But, so we've been the service provider at Angels Camp since 2003, and Cow Waste actually is a family-owned and operated business, myself, Rudy Vacarezza, my brother Casey, and then my father Dave that's in the audience here sitting next to Debbie. And Cow Waste had the pleasure of celebrating its 90th year in business in 2017. So we've been around since 1927, and that's something that we're very proud of and something that, in our experience, we want to bring to the community here in Angels Camp and Calaveras County as a whole. A little backup history on just how we came to be a 90-year-old company is, we weren't always garbage men. We started out doing something different. My great uncle, my dad's uncle, decided to move out from the Bay Area to the Central Valley and start a hog farm. And we, he started his hog farm out here, and he, what he would do is he'd go around the county, or the city, actually, it was in the Lodi area, and he'd collect the wet waste throughout town. And in collecting the wet waste, he'd then feed it to the pigs, but in order to do that, you kind of had to pick up the dry waste and the rubbish as well. And so then, he was a hog farmer that just happened to also collect trash so he could feed the food waste and the wet waste to the pigs. And in about 1926, he, there was a big cholera outbreak, or no, typhoid outbreak throughout the country, and they, the federal government decided the reason for that was because they were feeding some spoiled waste to pigs, so they outlawed it and said you had to kill all your pigs. So that's what happened, my uncle and his brother, my grandpa, had to slaughter his hogs, and then they stopped picking up the waste around town. And that quickly started adding up, and it became a public health issue. So then the city approached them and said, can you come collect this waste? You know the routes, you know the people, you got the equipment, and by the way, equipment, it was a horse and buggy, and a couple of guys with hunched-over backs. So all of a sudden, overnight, they went from hog farmers to garbage men, and of course, there was a, so they contracted with the city, and they got a contract to provide in certain areas, they all combined together, and they formed a garbage company, and now that garbage company is Cow Waste. So I guess we got this up, so I'll start with this slide show here. So yeah, and that's that slide. And we service some other communities in the valley. We do Community of Woodbridge, Rancho Marietta, and some competitive stuff in Sack County, San Joaquin County, but Calaveras County is by far our largest customer from customer count, as well as the sheer area that we cover, because as you know, Calaveras County is a large county to cover, as being a sole provider for waste services in a rural county. So this is kind of our customer count when we took over, I think it was about in 2015, this was our customer count, we had about 6,500 residential accounts, about 850 commercial business accounts that we collect. And a reason that we took over the contract and the old provider ended up exiting the county was because there was a lot of state mandates, and these up here are assembly bills, and there's 939, 1826, AB 32, there's just a bunch of numbers, but in reality, they're all really focused on recycling and recycling efforts and what that can really do for the system as well as the environment, such as AB 939 was really getting your diversion up, so you had to reach 50% by 2000. That's 50% diversion, so you're diverting recyclables from the landfill. And now that AB 39's goal has changed into 2020, they're going for a goal of 75% by 2020. And I'll tell you what, each percent as you go up is harder and harder to mine from the recyclable stream. So systems have had to change, equipment has had to change, programs have had to change, rates have had to change. And I mean, in 1826, it was about keeping organics out of the landfill, which in turn produces methane that is released, and landfill gas is actually the second most dominant form of methane in the country behind vehicles. AB 32 is the same thing with emission quality, whether it's from vehicles or keeping organics out of landfill, and AB 341 is based on mandatory organic, or mandatory commercial recycling programs, so that all businesses that produce X amount of yards of waste a year or a week have to recycle. And all that said is, we need to recycle more, and if we recycle more, that means you're keeping waste out of landfills, or recyclable products out of landfills. And by keeping recycling out, you increase the capacity of the landfill and the life of a landfill. And that's actually an issue in Calaveras County that matters a lot, and it matters acutely, and it matters now. So in 2016, at the 2015 prior rates of recycling, Rock Creek landfill would have filled up by 2021. And by fill up, I mean the current cell that it's using. So each landfill, you have to permit, engineer, and design cells, and how that cell is then going to be closed in the future. And in our increased recycling efforts from 2013 to now, or to 2017 and on throughout the county and in Angels Camp, we've managed to extend the life of that landfill up to six years, and that six years then is able to give the county an extra time to figure out how to permit, fund, and close the current cell that it's working on. So we found that to be a great accomplishment and a great benefit to the county, because don't, make no doubt about it, landfill is an asset to this county. And in doing this, and these things, these programs don't just happen overnight. We kind of inherited a broken system in 2013, and we've made some substantial financial investments in this county since then in order to get them into compliance and get the county and the City of Angels Camp to where it needs to be for the state and local mandates. And that's through new facilities. We've permitted and built a transfer facility at Double Springs Road just outside of Valley Springs. We've updated and built a new transfer facility in Arnold, at our office in Arnold. We've moved our shop to just outside of Valley Springs, and we've, in Calaveras, as you can see on the right, we currently have 34 jobs in Calaveras, and I think we're actually hiring someone tomorrow, so that number will probably be 35 tomorrow. And we are growing. And regionally, our headquarters, as you would like to say, is actually down in Galt, California, and we have regionally, we employ about 174, and like I said, tomorrow, maybe 175 people, depending on the background check. Then with that, the other financial investments we made is, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people have seen the nice big blue recycling carts. I think I dropped one off at Scottstown a couple of years ago, and as well as a green waste solution for the county. Prior to our 2016 contract extension renewal with the county, there wasn't green waste throughout the county, only a small community, a lock in Tena, had it. And now it's throughout Calaveras County. And we have a $2.2 million annual payroll, and we played a large role in the Butte Fire Disaster debris cleanup. We managed and coordinated all the trucking for the debris removal for that project, and we were glad to see us come together as a community, and it really got us to learn and know Calaveras County and its people and everybody involved. So like I said, those big blue carts, I mean, we put out just under 60, or I think that number's actually closer to 7,000 carts in the last two years, and I feel like sometimes I put out all 7,000 of those, but, and went from 2,600 to that 7,000. And then in, the big thing though is, it's not just the carts, it's what comes in the carts, or after the carts, whatever you want to say. It's, we brought up the recyclable tonnages from 5,500 to just under about 10,000, actually. We just did the report for this quarter, so we've almost doubled the amount of recycling that's produced in this county. Like I said, the more recycling that you have, the less that's going into your landfill. And so this is our basic residential service for Calaveras County. It's a three-cart system. Prior to this, most residents only enjoyed the trash service, and in this new contract, we've implemented a full three-cart system to where you have, the basic service is a 35-gallon trash cart, which is black, and we passed, and we gave out the 96-gallon big blue recycle cart to all our customers, and we have a 65-gallon, 55-gallon green waste cart also. And as we know, the topography throughout the county is a little different, so up in the Ebbets Pass region, carts don't really work. There's not really many curbs, there's some really steep driveways, there's vector problems, bear problems, bear boxes. So we have a can system. So they have a 35-gallon trash can, 35-gallon blue recycle can, a lot of those are in bear boxes, like I said. And then all of our customers receive a three-and-a-half cubic yard green waste handy hauler that they can get once a year to do yard cleanups, such as pine needles or garden work, whatever you want to call spring cleaning, and they can get that once a year, and that service is also labeled throughout the year for a limited cost. That kind of overlaps, but, so this, some of the new equipment that we had to do to deal with these new systems that we've put in place in Calaveras County, is, we kind of had to automate everything. We were doing everything by hand, kind of the old-school rear-load truck, getting off, hucking cans. And this is a little different system, we have carts now. We automated our fleet. By automated, it means cart drives up, has a little hydraulic arm, grabs it, dumps it in. What we've also used in the county that's really done well in reducing truck traffic and road maintenance, as well as the split-body trucks. So now, as, if you have your green waste cart and your trash cart out, we go by in one pass, for the most part, in the county. That means both commodities go in one truck. I know that sounds funny, but if you see, there's a split right down the middle, and so you dump a green waste can, the packer goes one way into one side, and then dunk the trash, packer goes the other way into the other side. And that's really been able to keep us off the road, and keeping us off the road is really what keeps the community safe, as well as our drivers, and I mean, just the sheer noise in front of your house. I mean, everybody's gotten woken up by a garbage trucker. If you haven't, good for you. And then on the left there is our front-load commercial truck. A lot of times, like I said, we had the rear loaders we were hooking up, but now this allows us to really come up, and we go in with our front forks, we stab the can, we dump the can, we're in and out of the parking lot, about three times faster than rear loader. So it's keeping your parking lots safe, keeping your customers safe, the employees safe, of people in parking lots, really gets us in and out, and it's safe, we have good drivers, and it also allows for an increase in container size. So if you had three two-yarders before, now you can have a six-yarder and a two-yarder, or even an eight-yarder, so we can all come up and stab one. One truck does it all. And then the other thing in the middle is, we have a new app, actually. So yeah, we have an app, and it's pretty cool, actually. It's one of the best features of it, it kind of informs you of your service day. So it's, the way it works, every other week is green waste, and then the next week is recycling. So every week you get trash service, then every other week you have green waste and recycling. And the app kind of tells you like, hey, it's green waste week, and your service is tomorrow, don't forget to put your cart out. And it can be through a text message, a phone call, an alert that actually goes through the app as well. If you guys are customers of ours, you guys should check it out, it's pretty neat, actually. And then also, it has a do's and don't list of what you can put in your recycling. I mean, you could scroll in there and type pizza box, and it'll tell you what you do with the pizza box, or chip bag. I mean, it's, you couldn't imagine, and if people search it, it's not there, it sends us a notification, and then we add it to the app. So it's, we're constantly updating it, we get comments about it all the time, and it's something that people tend to enjoy, and it's new, like we've only been doing it for about a year. So encourage you to download it, you can get it on any of your app platforms, Android or Apple. So how do we get to the system that we have now in Calaveras? In the three-cart system and everything I described, the reason we were able to do all this is because in 2016, our contract was about to expire, and it's a contract that we kind of inherited through an acquisition, and it was, there was a lot of problems. Calaveras wasn't meeting the state mandates of recycling 50% by 2020, let alone 2013. And we, through the efforts of the programs I just laid out, had an opportunity to help the county with that, and they partnered with us, they were great partners, and the City of Angels Camp has been too, and the new programs that we've implemented. Like I said, we thought about using incentivized rates, we had the 75% diversion rate, as well as the Rock Creek landfill was about to fill up, and that was all issues in the county. And even after we got our new contract extension, and with the new programs, obviously come new rates, we saw growth in our customer base. I mean, for the first few months, yeah, some people fell off, stopped their service, but a lot of those people called back and three months later, and they, almost, a small chunk of them even increased their services. So with these new programs, people, there's some buy-in, and it takes some time to get people to get on board, but we've seen success, and we're continuing to see success throughout the county. And kind of bringing that all back, is this, that's kind of what everything, that contract allowed all this, these dominos to fall in place, and we met the mandates and the needs of the community as a whole. And so, that said, I mean, everybody says up here, oh, well, and not only did it meet the mandates of the community, but it also was a financial incentive for the county to do this contract. So with the county, the county, in the new contract, they have a 3% franchise fee. And what we are, we're the franchise-exclusive hauler. So 3% of our revenue that we get from the county is then assessed and given back to the county to use for mainly, mainly infrastructure and their public works department, and that's a $3 million revenue center that the county has gained over the life of the contract. As you can see, it's about $120,000 a month.
How about the city?
Or a year, sorry.
How about the city?
So currently, in the city, that, there's no franchise fee written in Angels Camp.
Get on that, Melissa.
And then, well, with that, also, there was also an aspect of the Calaveras contract that, in the recycling that you put out on your curb, you know, you can go turn in your bottles and cans, and you can get to a California redemption value, and that's what you're putting in your curb side as well, if you're not going to a buyback center. And what we did with Calaveras County is, of that recyclables that we collected and then processed at our facility down in Galt, which we run a material recovery facility down there, 90% of the current market value of those recyclables that were collected, processed, bailed, marketed, and then sold by us to other producers, we refund that money to the county. So we're not getting rich off the recyclables. And it's a market fluctuation, so that number does change every month with markets, but on an annual basis, it's about $150,000 a year, and almost $3.5 million projected over the life of the contract. And as Scott brought up, these are elements that Angels Camp doesn't currently have in their contract. And following into that is, the time for Angels Camp to kind of plan for their futures now, and Cow, we'll be returning in the next few months to kind of go over our contract and hopefully get a contract extension with the city, and we want to have a long-term partnership with you guys, and we've made the investment and the time, and we want to be here for a long time, and we hope to partner with you guys in the future. And that kind of concludes my presentation, thanks for your time, and once again, thank you Debbie and Destination Angels Camp for having us here to speak to the council. And I'll be available for questions after now. I know I took up probably a little more time than you wanted me to, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a green? I don't have a green can.
I don't either.
You freeze cans.
I see them around.
I'm green cans.
Has the rest of this, has the rest of the council gone down there and seen the facility? I would highly suggest that you guys go.
They wanted to go.
It's actually really impressive.
Yeah, anytime we do tours, just email us, show up, we'll give you a tour. I mean.
It's a good tour.
We had to coordinate, I think. I think Mary Beth came to something and said we should coordinate the council who hasn't gone.
I'm good.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
These are mine, by the way.
Mine's.
Okay.
I'm really good on mine.
So moving on.
Me too.
Consent agenda.
We have two consent agenda items, and is there anything the council would like to say about them?
I'd like to pull Bee for a little discussion.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding consent agenda? No? Okay. So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 6th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, Amanda.
Okay.
I heard two seconds, so who are you?
Oh, I heard Beele, sorry, Beele and Councilmember Matildee.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, Dave.
Hey. How are you?
Um, looking for a summary of the activity. You guys did a great job on that small pond out there. I never quite understood why it took so long to get that done, and I'm trying to understand what the overall framework of the LLD is, you know, there's a collection for all the residents there, includes landscape on the roads and lighting and all that other stuff, but it also includes some scheduled maintenance on the ponds, right? Does it include all of the ponds on the property, or does it just include the big pond and that small one? What's all-inclusive in that annual activity that's supposed to be scheduled?
We're going to have to determine that as we move forward. There's eight ponds out there and seven sites.
So they're all within the purview of the district?
Now, there's a lot of opinions out there right now. We have the Horizon Report, which tells us what we're supposed to be doing out there, but we also have other opinions that say we don't have to do anything, it's up to the city's choosing. So the main thing that we focused on last few years was the big pond, but the small pond wasn't permitted for any maintenance activities. And so the last, maybe six months, we lumped it onto the big ponds permit, and we, the big ponds permit only gives us about from September, a short month and a half to really do any work there, so I just tried and stuck my neck out and see if we could do it a little early this year, and we were successful, that's why we had to move so quickly on it. We had to have it completed before February 15th.
You're talking about the small pond?
The small pond, yes.
You didn't do anything on the big pond?
We haven't done anything on the big pond. We really don't have a big pond maintenance plan yet, we're just, we're still in our infancy trying to figure out what we're doing out there.
Excuse me, there is a maintenance plan, it's part of the Horizon study.
Yeah.
And that was voted by the council, and that was what is supposed to be done, regardless of any other opinions out there.
No, no, that was done, that part was done, the deepening of the pond was done.
The main pond.
But the yearly maintenance of it has never been determined. So what do we do on a yearly basis?
I think that's in that study as well. I'm pretty sure that's what's in there, and that was mandated, that we follow the Horizon program. There are residents out there that are upset because the work's not getting done, and it should be getting done.
Yeah, and beyond the ponds, the landscape activity, you know, in the centerpiece of the road and on the adjacent, that's in scope for that agreement too, right?
What do you mean that?
Like going down, say, Smith Flat Road, there's crepe myrtle trees and rock roses and all that.
Oh, yes.
That's supposed to be, all that irrigation for that and those plants, that's all in that plan too, right? There's a lot of complaints coming my way about those things dying, broken sprinklers, just weeds, lack of maintenance. So I think we're in dire need of a documented annual plan that I think Melissa met with some advisory folks out there and got some of that ironed out, but we really need to firm that up about what's in scope, what the schedule's going to be, if it's going to be a winter activity or a summer activity. So people know what to expect, because, you know, years go by and nothing happens, and everybody just wonders.
Yeah. But on some, if you're hearing complaints, can you forward them to the city, because we do operate a lot in the vacuum if we don't hear something. I know I've been checking. I've, I've been checking on the landscaping contractor and, and on the, the pond maintenance, yeah, there's, there's still some big holes there. And that's, that's why I'm kind of gun shy in saying following Horizon Report only. So I'll, I'll still do some research on that. I won't stand absolutely and say I'm, I'm correct on anything.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be appropriate. And I also think it might be appropriate. One of the citizens stood up at the podium in the meeting, I think it was in, it was in November, I think it was December.
Yeah, it was at Bret Hart.
At Bret Hart.
Yeah.
And brought this issue up and, and we've never, as far as I know, we've never responded to that person about why not we would set up some kind of a resident committee or some kind of an advisory committee. Because it's the residents that know whether the property's being taken care of. And it's hard for us to pay attention to that. So perhaps getting some kind of advisory committee together is, that guy was, his name was Mr. Holston, as he requested, we at least need to look at that as a solution to the deferred maintenance that's happening once again.
Is he the one we met with?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So, now group just follows, you met with the advisory committee that's completely different. You met with somebody there, but
Okay.
We need to address this issue.
Well, and maybe we need to poll the Horizon.
So we, we will. Dave and I have been reviewing the budget. I know, just coming into this at this point where I am, and I just want to thank Dave for his work because prior to this year, I understood that it was operated out of the county, the city administrator's office. So it's my understanding that we did do the large pond maintenance project. The only thing budgeted this year was pond maintenance and then the small pond maintenance project. So I appreciate Dave's willingness to jump on this to make sure that we could get it completed within this budgeted year. We have contracted the landscaping contract, which is, I believe, nearing $100,000 a year, just under potentially of the total assessment that we collect. And that's a contract that I've asked Dave support in monitoring and, and making sure that we are providing adequate scope and oversight of that. We are working, Dave and I, to identify what the strategy will be for the $15,000 that's set aside for pond maintenance, that's the budgeted amount, and identifying what the work plan for that is and any cultural improvements. Dave and I have also discussed moving forward with next year's budget and fee assessment, a, a capital reserve amount, because we're starting to see the need for some infrastructure replacement. And right now, it's rolled over year from year and sort of a zero-based budgeting approach. So identifying a capital reserve amount within the existing LLD budget. We have met with interested members from the Green Horn Creek community to hear their issues and concerns and it was ultimately that meeting that elevated this to the, the priority that it was. And fortunately, the window and the opportunity presented itself where we were able to get out there and complete some work this year. So that is the information that I have at this time. We will take a look at the Horizon Report and see if we can get information out of that in terms of what the annual maintenance schedule and improvements for the maintenance should look like for the ponds. But then that, you know, that's $15,000 a year that's budgeted. I know Dave has some alternatives that he's identified, but in terms of the long-term projects, the large pond projects, the LLD did borrow money from the city to advance that project. So one of the things that we're going to be considering is, you know, how do we identify a set aside whereby we're providing them the expected maintenance and then putting funds aside for the long, bigger term projects. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, we do the small pond every five years and the, or the large pond every five years?
No, the, when I had the contractor out there doing the large pond, he thought that we'd be back in the, in there in about 10 years doing it again.
Okay.
At the inlet to the large pond, we're supposed to be cleaning that out every three, four, or five years. We're checking, that's our sediment basin. We'll check the sediment load in there and schedule a project. The small pond was, was about 10, 15 years, I think, the last time this was done. So we're, we're about 10, 15 years on our, our cycles.
Yeah, it's probably best you refer to that study. I think you outlined that all pretty well.
Okay. So I will take a look at that and then we'll work from there. But we will be bringing an item on March 6th for the engineers' report. So Dave and I will have an update and a staff memo for the council as it pertains to this topic.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, thanks, Dave.
All right, thanks.
Any other comment? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item B?
So move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that, Susan? So moving on to regular agenda, how, I haven't had this in front of me like this, Melissa. So do I, the seven A and break them down or the entire thing?
Present item seven A, present of the audit report and we'll teach each item under the regular agenda independently. They have presentations for those items.
Okay. So, hello, get ahead. Hi.
Yeah, hi. I'm, yeah, yeah.
I'm Mike Sargent. I'm the interim finance director.
Mike, will you go to the podium? Otherwise, it doesn't get recorded.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Sargent. I'm the interim finance director. I've been here for a whole four weeks. Larry's going to give the presentation. He obviously has much more knowledge of the details associated with the report. Larry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll stand over here and handle myself.
All right, thank you. Yeah, members of the council. So I believe you all have a copy of the, of the audit report. And so this is for fiscal year end June 30, 2017. We, we were out doing the audit in November and so the report issuance was a little bit delayed compared to what we had communicated in the engagement letter. But we did, did get it finalized and issued while Julie was here. So she had an opportunity to review it and I know Mr. Sargent also reviewed it before we, we printed it. So I'm just going to go over a few highlights. I'm not going to go over every detail of the report. And feel free to jump in and ask questions or you can wait until after I've given my, my little overview of the report. So on page one, this is the auditor's report. And at the bottom of the report, of page one is, is the opinion. And so my job as the auditor is to give you an opinion on whether or not the financial statements that were presented to me when I came out to do the audit were correct and fairly stated. We use materiality as a basis for determining fair presentation. So the opinion is a clean opinion. It's unqualified. So it means that after the audit and any adjustments that may have been prepared during the audit, that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Okay? I'll skip over to page seven. And page seven is the results of your operations on a short-term basis. And so just the bottom line in the general fund is the city had a, had a loss of $19,646 during the year. So nearly break even, but did go a little bit to the negative. There was about $93,000 in capital outlay. So, you know, take, take out some of those discretionary spending items and the city would have been in a positive position. I will point out that the cash balance in the general fund at June 30, 2017 was $1,030,000, which is about a 33% of expenditures. So it's not a real high carryover cash balance, but, but, but a third is, is pretty reasonable for a city of this size. Okay?
Question right there?
Yes, sir.
On, on the summary page, come back to that. Addressed to us on February 20th and you have this table with categorizations here.
Okay.
There's a statement that the general fund, unassigned, unreserved funds ending, it was 972, 757. How does that compare to the million something that you just said a minute ago?
Yeah, so the, the unassigned, 972,000 on the bottom of page five in the general fund. If, if you take your, that's not cash. A lot of, a lot of readers do get that confused with, with cash. It's really close, but that's just a coincidence. But, but that's really, if you take your total assets minus your total liabilities and deferred resources, inflows and outflows, and then subtract your restricted and, and other categories of your fund balance, that's what's left over. So that's the amount that, that, that you can assign to future budgets. It's really your carryover fund balance would, would be the unassigned portion.
Okay. So if we were looking at our budget process and we had workshops in July where we were estimating our reserves at 748, 052 and some of the things that came from the finance officer, understanding it's a moving kind of a number, but it was over $200,000 different. Am I looking at apples and apples there or is it apples and oranges?
You know, I would have to look at the other report that you're referring to to let you know if it's apples and apples or if there's something else involved there. Without seeing that other report, I couldn't tell you that it's apples and apples.
I have that other report and
We have that other report and all we have to do is determine the basis for the report
where your $748,000 was versus this. It's just, we need to find out if we're dealing with apples and oranges.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll get a reconciliation. We'll get a reconciliation put together.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something about capital improvements or some spending that brought us, or else we might have been in a positive cash flow.
Correct.
I saw somewhere, and I'm trying to locate it right now, where we had, by my numbers, 117,000 in allocated capital expenditures that we did not spend.
Okay.
And that made our numbers look a lot better than perhaps they should.
Sure, yeah. You're, you're probably referring to the, to the budget to actual on page 35. And that, that would indicate, well, the final budget, budget for the general fund, equipment category was 96,000, but there was 29,000, close to 30,000 in the final budget for structures and, and none of that was spent. So you are correct. Yeah, your, your budget did indicate that you would spend more than you actually did. The final budget actually projected a $259,000 loss where, and I'm on page 35 on the, on the budget.
Yeah, page 36 was the total capital outlay. It was budgeted 210,310 and we actually spent 93,242.
Right, right.
So my question is, the other 117,000 and change, did we all of a sudden not need that equipment or was pushed off to the next year and now we need to be aware that that's money we're going to have to spend this year?
Right, yeah. That, I, that would depend on your '17, '18 budget. I, I haven't reviewed the '17, '18 budget to determine if they rolled forward some of those costs into '17, '18.
But that
That very well could be.
That would skew that $19,000 loss. That was really more like $136,000 loss had we spent that money in the appropriate or in the budgeted year.
Well, let's see now. The, the change in the, in the, in the total capital outlay was 33,000. So, so there, from what I'm looking at on the budget to actual is a, is the 33,000 of the
I'm looking at total capital outlay on the bottom of page 36 or three quarters way down.
Okay.
It shows, it shows the delta is 117,068, not 30. What's the 30 you're coming up with?
You know what? There, there may have been a change from, I'm not sure if that's the draft or the final
Are you kidding me?
Report.
It's kind of a big difference.
Right.
Do I have the draft or the final?
It's my understanding we have the final.
Here's the, yeah, here's the final bound report right here.
Page 36?
So I believe that that is page 35 and here's, I'm not sure that that's the final report.
So, did we have the final?
We don't have the final because there's some 33,069 in the final. It's 117,000. So...
Larry, when did the versions change between these and the one that we had in preparation for the agenda?
What else is different?
Yeah, as far as what was provided to council and when that was provided, I, I couldn't say, but there was a change in the budget. I initially prepared the budget to actual schedule off the budget that was, that was provided to me. And then Julie made some additional changes just right before issuance. So it is possible that, that that change was made after.
We were not, I was not notified that Julie had made changes with the auditor. So I apologize that the final was not included in the packet. It was my understanding that you had the most recent draft. So this is the information as presented.
Yeah, and then there was a number, page number and change that I made for the final. I believe that the prior report went from, the one, the one that you have probably went from like 34 to 36, I think. And so during my final technical review, there was just that minor number and change, which is why page 35 is in the final and 36 is on the report that you're looking at.
Unfortunately, that information was not communicated to my office.
This is 35 or 36 in there.
Well, is it possible that those are the only two?
Yeah, there, there was one other change that, you know, it, yeah, one other change, but it's a minor name change in, in the final page, 46, I believe. There was a change in just a correction in, in the city name.
So that number's the only change?
For the, for the budget to actual, I believe so. That, that
What was the outlay that caused that change? What was the discovery?
Well, it was just in the, in the budget that was initially provided to me.
Yeah.
And then Julie, when she reviewed the budget to actual, she noted that there had been an amendment, a budget amendment that wasn't in the initial budget that was provided to me. And so she gave me the additional documentation to support that amendment and then the change was made to the report.
Do you recall if it was a specific item?
No, I don't recall if it was only like one item or no, no.
So they dropped, they dropped the budgeted amount by about 75,000 or so and that dropped the final. So I have nothing to do with what was actually spent.
Correct.
It had nothing to do with what, what was
With the budget.
Priorly shown, prior shown as a budget.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So given all this, well, now it comes down to the expenses. Well, how do you still come up, make such a change and still come up with the same loss?
With the
I don't know, it's all
Yeah, that's actual. The actual loss wouldn't have changed.
Got it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Pick it up where you were there.
Yeah, no problem. So, you know, the only other two items that I'm going to point out, one of them which I'm sure has been a topic of the city is the, is the pension. And so the, the pension footnote is discussed starting on page 25 for note seven. And at fiscal year end, on the table on page 26, fiscal year end, the net pension liability for the miscellaneous employees was 2.7 million and safety employees was 1.9 million. The city's contributions during the '16, '17 year were approximately $609,000. And those numbers are only going to go higher by quite a bit. So it's something that the city really needs to be aware of and prepare for as far as the, the pension costs going up.
Now, those are unfunded. Do you have any idea what the carrying costs are? They can't be free unfunding. We must, we're borrowing it essentially, right, by not funding it?
It's basically a loan, but you are funding what they are It's basically a loan, but you are funding what they are requiring you to fund. This is on, yeah, on the PERS, CalPERS pension. The city is paying the annual unfunded actuarial liability. It's a lump sum payment that CalPERS requires to be paid in July of each year, or can be financed, that lump sum payment can be financed during the year. So the city is paying that, plus the normal cost of, which is a calculation on the salaries, and the normal cost is on page twenty-five. You know, like for the miscellaneous tier-one plan, the employer contribution is about eleven percent of every dollar that's paid out to the miscellaneous plan tier-one employees. So the city is making all the required contributions that CalPERS is requiring.
Right, but the balance is, the unfunded balance is growing.
Correct.
So we're financing essentially. Do you know what the interest rate, what it's costing us to finance it?
Yeah, yeah. Right now, the interest rate is seven and a half percent. At least it was for the sixteen-seventeen fiscal year. CalPERS has adjusted that, and they're lowering the discount rate to seven percent over a three-year period. And so that will end up costing the city more.
So would it be smart to consider, and this is up to four, this loan's up over four-point-seven million?
Correct.
Would it be wise to consider a four-point-seven or five million dollar loan at a lower interest rate to pay this thing down to zero and then just pay off the debt service?
Well, the problem with that, and I have seen other entities do that, where they pay it off and they think they're done, only to have CalPERS have a bad year with their investments, and then they're right back to having another unfunded pension liability when they thought it was paid off. I've seen that happen.
What are the options right now with benefits? Because I know there's been a lot of talk at the league and at the state level, where they're talking about the reform aspect of it, but what options do we have? I know counties have been offered other options out of CalPERS, but what do cities have?
I'm not familiar, and I'm not up to speed on this issue. The only difference that I know of is the options that we offer for classic employees, and then Peppera employees, and the differences between those, and the costs borne, the city there. But in terms of other alternatives and options, I'm not aware right now.
I do audit another city that terminated CalPERS, and they chose not to pay the termination payout. And what CalPERS did was they lowered all the retiree payments to forty percent. So they're paying forty cents on the dollar to all the retirees that were collecting their full pension. So it's a serious issue. And CalPERS does have a hypothetical termination amount, and it's probably about three times of what you see your unfunded pension liability on, you know, the four-point-seven million. My, you know, just ballpark figure, would it probably be somewhere between ten and twelve, maybe even fourteen million dollars to terminate.
Sounds like we should do an analysis of what it costs to stop CalPERS without paying the termination fee and then make up the difference for our retirees.
If it can be done, but it's very difficult.
Because this is going to, if this continues to rise like this, it's unsustainable.
Absolutely.
So something has to be done.
Something has to be done, and there's discussion for the first time at, you know, at the governor's level that, about reducing retiree payouts to existing retirees. So I think they see the writing on the wall.
How many retirees do we have? Do we even know?
I believe we have twelve.
It sounds like a million dollars per retiree. We got a-
But then you're talking, your active employees as well, that all that gets thrown into the census data to calculate the actuarial information.
We need to consider an analysis of that situation.
Yeah, well, and I thought we were working with the changeover. We might want to relook at that.
What makes this worse for us is I understand we're also paying social security in addition to CalPERS for our employees. So we're matching social security, we're matching CalPERS, and-
Well, we're paying the employee contribution.
We're paying the employer.
Employer contribution, right, right. And we're going backwards. And so our employees,
when they retire, they're going to get the CalPERS and social security.
Right. Yeah, and my understanding with other entities that have gotten future contribution projections is that the employer contribution could go up as high as forty percent within the next, like, five years. So that would be an additional, like, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand a year from sixteen-seventeen.
This needs to move way up our priority list, I think.
And right now, I know, because it's one of the top topics, the league, is where they're at and what the governor's going to do with the reform. But no one knows what he's-
But just without giving it, without putting a pencil to it, it seems like if we stopped paying the CalPERS and reimbursed our retirees, the difference, we'd probably come out way ahead.
Yeah, the probably, yeah, there's a lot of reasons why you can't stop paying CalPERS. You're under contract with them, so if you break the contract, then they will reduce the payouts to the existing retirees. I mean, there's a lot of problems with-
Okay, so I guess my question for you then is, have you ever seen a situation where, this is unsustainable, where a city successfully or county exited CalPERS or mitigated this situation?
No. I'm not aware of one. No.
Okay.
Other than this kind of a noise coming out of Sacramento, is there anything legitimate, significant going on in reform that you're aware of?
Yeah, not since the Peppera Reform Act back in January of two thousand thirteen. I'm not aware of any new legislation that has been enacted to address these new issues. And, yeah, the big problem now was that they lowered that discount rate from seven and a half percent to seven percent. So for the sixteen-seventeen fiscal year, they're always two years behind on their actuarial valuations. With the stock market doing so well, and PERS did have a better year than the seven and a half percent projection, that will have a positive effect on future rates. But then lowering the discount rate and other factors will offset that.
Was that the seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand dollar ACR adjustment? Was that because of the good stock market? Am I-
I'm not sure what-
I don't know what pages it is.
We've heard the number four hundred thousand in terms of unfunded pension liability, but really what it is is four million.
Yeah, your net pension liability is about four-point-six, four-point-seven million. And on page twenty-eight, at the bottom there, on the bottom table, actually, yeah, on the final report there, you'll see what happens if the discount rate goes down even by one percent. The net pension liability would go to over seven million. Now, CalPERS is lowering it by a half a percent, so it'll be somewhere in between four-point-seven and seven-point-two million. And they base your contribution rates, part of that, a big part of it, is based on your unfunded liability.
Is the discount rate linked to certain indexes, or is it adjusted at the discretion of CalPERS?
Correct, yes. It's approved by the CalPERS board, yeah.
So there's no index that we can look at that says, okay, this is what it's going to be? That it's-
It's going to be seven percent. That's what CalPERS said it's going to be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate that we involve, you know, our representation, you know, in the assembly and the senate and all that to say this is-
And that's been one of the topics that, especially on the board that I've been appointed to, that it's where they are. You know, we get presentation over presentation that they're going to do reform, but nothing has happened. And I know there's been polls. I've been, with the transition of staff, there's been a disconnect, unfortunately, but there are polls out there that we can be replying to, and there's letters that we can be sending to those individuals. So we can maybe put it on the next agenda, or I don't know how that would work, but yeah.
So one of the things that I'm aware of is legal counsel will be bringing to us a legislative platform discussion in March. Is this an area that you're working with your local jurisdictions to develop advocacy or talking points as part of that legislative platform?
I know that some other cities are looking at this issue, but if this is something that City of Angels wants to push, we can add that on to and make it more of a, take a more proactive role as well. We don't need to necessarily just adopt a legal letter. We could also write a letter of your own as well.
And there's been multiple of that, but I think we, maybe we can work with legal on how we can do that, because I know here that we have to constantly bring it back to council. So if there's something that we can, where we know where we stand on some of these items, maybe the city administrator can go ahead and voice the opinion of how we feel about these items, too.
Is the employee contribution to this, just in your general knowledge, half of what the city's is, or is it some other number?
Yeah, the employee contribution, you can see that in the table on page twenty-five at the bottom. So for miscellaneous plan tier-one employer, or employee contribution rate is eight percent versus eleven percent for the city. So you can see the difference. Like for safety plan, for the police, tier-one, the employer rate is about double, the employee rate. So it depends on which plan you're looking at. And the city has six different tiers, so six different plans with CalPERS.
So in that case, eighteen-point-four-three percent of their income?
Correct.
Plus the seven and a half percent they're paying in social security?
Yeah, yeah, approximately, yeah. Six-point-two for social, but yeah.
Oh, six-point-two? So we're paying twenty-five percent of that salary the city's matching in?
Right, right.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a big number. And actually, for safety, that's one of, you know, that's actually not a big number compared to other safety entities that I look at. I've seen as high as fifty percent.
Melissa, do you get the update on CalPERS? Turn to you. Okay.
So anyway, yeah, just something that you need to be aware of and-
I'm afraid to ask anyone.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other, the other item is on the post-retirement healthcare benefit plan. And this is a plan that has also an annual required contribution. And right now, the city is on the pay-as-you-go, and so the liability there is one-point-four million on the other than pension expense benefit. So this here is right now operating under Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Forty-Five. That's changing to GASB seventy-five, starting June thirty, two thousand eighteen. And so as an auditor, we'll be required to record the full amount of the unfunded actuarial accrued liability on your financial statements, which will be about three-point-two million. So right now, there's about one-point-four million recorded, starting June thirty, two thousand eighteen. If we were to use the same actuarial numbers that was prepared for June thirty-seventeen, that number would more than double.
Where's the page reference?
Page thirty, I'm sorry, yeah, page thirty.
So because they're changing accounting rules, we have another one-point-eight million?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no.
Well, as far as what is booked on the financial statements, as far as what we're required to record right now-
So is this a real number? If you can go from one-point-four to three-point-two with an accounting change, is there a reason to worry about this number, or is it more like the federal deficit?
It's a moving target, for sure. But up until now, we're only required to record as a liability the annual required contribution that's not funded to a trust fund. And because there's no trust fund established, we've only booked the annual required contribution that's not funded to that trust fund. But starting in June thirty, two thousand eighteen, we're going to be required to record the full actuarially accrued unfunded liability. So it's just-
So what's the effect of that? What does that mean to us, other than just another number in this book?
Yeah, the effect could be like creditors that might be reviewing your financial situation and see that this, that you have this potential liability out there. That's a potential problem.
So something to pass down to our kids, great-grandkids, and just keep on going?
Potentially, yeah. But up until two thousand eight, we didn't record this liability. So prior to two thousand eight, you just did the pay-as-you-go on your retiree healthcare, and that was it. But starting June thirty, two thousand eight, they came up with the GASB forty-five, and that's when they wanted cities and entities to understand that there is this future impact of offering this benefit.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. So that's all that I was going to cover, and, you know, and so I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
I have one question, and I just didn't get any. So in the beginning, you mentioned that the city has not presented the management discussion and analysis that accounting principles generally accept. So by us not doing that, what are we, I mean, what are we losing out by not doing that?
Really, nothing.
Okay, so nothing to be worried-
I mean, from an auditor's standpoint, if it's not presented, my responsibility is to present an explanatory paragraph in the auditor's report. As far as any additional impact, I can't think of any.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, yes, no, go ahead.
One of the main revenue sources, I'm trying to find this book here, but it was intergovernmental revenues of five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. That was significantly higher than what was budgeted. Do you know, can you explain what that is and how sustainable that is?
Yeah, let me take a look here. So, let's see here. What page are you?
That's, I'm trying, let me-
Might be page thirty-four.
This one's a twenty.
My note says on our-
Okay, there we go, page thirty-four, yeah.
Yeah, page thirty-four.
Yes, like the middle of page thirty-four in the bound report, the page thirty-five in the one that's in the board packet. But it looks like five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand was the actual, four-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand was budgeted. And without looking at the detail, I'm thinking that the majority of that relates to strike team reimbursements.
Okay, so we budgeted a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three-oh-one for strike team?
Right.
And we received three-twenty-five, five-seventy-four?
Well, yeah, a hundred and seventy-six thousand was budgeted for public safety, and without looking at the detail, I'm thinking that the majority of that is strike team-related. And then the actual came in at three-twenty-five. I could get you the detail if you need more information on that, but that would be my, you know.
So that was one reason that we also came so close to our budget. It makes a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar windfall budget-wise in that area. And as we know how sustainable that is, we had a pretty bad fire season.
Well, on the flip side, on the flip side there, you're going to, your expenses to pay out the additional strike team members would go up. Part of this funding for strike teams would be, would be equipment reimbursement as well. And so that portion would stay with the city. But with the increase in revenue, my guess is that there'd also be an increase in strike team reimbursements to the strike team members.
Well, such a significant increase. Do you know where I might find that in here?
Yeah, so that would be under public safety, page thirty-five. Under fire, you'll see- Under Fire, you'll see that there was 76,000 more spent than, than budgeted, so, yeah.
And I have a follow-up question, because I had a similar, on what Scott just touched on. So when you go into 17, 17-1 and 2, regarding what we just talked about?
Okay.
I was under the impression that this was fixed, and that finance was working on to resolve these. So in 17-1 and 2, I'm a bit confused as to where we're at on that, because I always, I thought we had resolved those concerns.
Yeah, and, and so, what's in 17-1 and 2? This is as of June 30... Yeah, 46 and, let's see here, actually, page 47, yeah, 47. So this is, this is as of June 30, 2017. It doesn't take into account after. And I think what you're referring to is action that was taken after June 30, 2017.
Okay.
Which would be part of the management response.
Yeah.
Down, down there, under the finding.
Okay.
So maybe we can follow up, Melissa, and see where we're at with that, please?
Okay. Do we ever, I guess this would have been the, do we ever get paid for relinquishment of the bridge from Caltrans? That would have been after this, though.
I can't remember right now, was it after before Dave? Okay.
Okay, we did receive the check, though. Okay, cool.
And then, based on the numbers, I'm trying to, I had to write notes, because you wrote so many. So when you're looking at maintenance and facilities, and especially deferred maintenance?
Okay.
They're pretty, pretty high numbers. So what is the risk that we're running by currently now going through fixing them? Or looking at finding other locations and getting rid of these assets and facilities that are so far past the deferred maintenance? That we can't, the cost is just not worth it for us? What is the risk that we're running by ignoring those numbers?
Now, are you referring to a specific page there? I mean, getting to the page number...
I just meant in general with the money, the deferred maintenance cost that's acquiring on the facilities?
Okay.
It, we just keep pushing it out and out. Yeah, it, I didn't write the page number, I just wrote, and that's what I'm trying to find. But the deferred maintenance, and then the assets of facilities, and it was two... There's a big difference.
Was it depreciation or deferred maintenance?
It's deferred maintenance. I wish I'd written the page number down.
Never seen that.
Yeah, I don't, uh... Don't recall having any, any items in here for deferred maintenance. It might be part of the budget, I'm thinking.
And there's accumulated depreciation that's on page three.
Yeah.
Oh, deferred out, deferred outflows or pensions?
Correct, yeah, the deferred inflows and outflows on page three, pension related.
Page three's the, the statement net position.
She's in the bit now?
I have some balance sheet.
Maybe that's something I haven't talked to Melissa about.
Yeah, and if you want to, my contact information is in the report, so you can feel free to email me or, or call when, when you have the question here, so...
Oh, okay, see, um, no, actually, it was page 15, I'm sorry, but no, yeah. It was under the cost of normal maintenance containers that do not add to the value of the asset. And so then there was a list of assets useful, um...
Yeah, I see, yeah, so that's under item G on page 15. And so, yeah, that, that would be a definition of what the city would, would analyze to determine if an asset should be capitalized or not. So this, this would be more towards the capitalization policy of the, of the city.
Does that go away with the new tax laws? Or are the tax laws even affecting accounting? Because they're not capitalizing expenses anymore with businesses.
Yeah, it shouldn't affect the city as far as the tax law, no, no. No, I'm, I'm not aware of any new governmental accounting standard board statements that'll affect the, the assets of the city. There was one last year as far as reclassifying to assets held for investment, but that's the only one that I'm aware of.
That's all I have right now. Does anybody else have any questions? Does the public have any questions or comment? No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Okay, so do we need to make a separate motion for 7A to, to do that? Or do we combine it into all of the...
They're not combined, 7A stands alone.
Okay.
I'll move we accept the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, as prepared by Larry Bane, CPA.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to request a brief recess for un momento.
We come in and to our next presentation by the Calaveras Council of Governments, COG, on the formation of the Joint Powers Agreement between the city, the county of Calaveras. And I will hand it over to Amber.
Good evening, council members, Amber Collins with the Calaveras Council of Governments. I'll be introducing Phil McGuire with us tonight from McGuire Management Consultancy that the COG hired on behalf of our member agencies, which is the County of Calaveras and City of Angels Camp, to facilitate the formation of a joint powers agency for transit services in our county and development of a transition plan. And Phil will be kind of walking through a pretty short PowerPoint presentation on the process and what the transition would look like.
Thank you, Amber. Hello, everyone, I am Phil McGuire, and I was retained by the Council of Governments to guide this process. I thought it would be appropriate to spend a couple of minutes indicating a little bit of background on myself and why I was chosen to do this. I've been in the transit business my whole career, and have done a variety of things in that, various management levels in various governmental organizations and so on throughout that period of time. But specific to formation of an agency like is proposed here. Among the things that I've been involved in were back in 2004 or '05, when the City of Elk Grove created its own transit system in-house instead of being operated by Sacramento Regional Transit. I was retained to help with the transition process, and then to serve as its transit manager for the first year after the formation. Eastern Sierra Transit Authority is more like what's proposed here now, where that was a new joint powers authority created in 2007 in Inyo and Mono Counties, and included the City of Bishop and the town of Mammoth Lake. So there were four jurisdictions in that JPA. Again, I was involved in facilitating the formation of the JPA, and in that case, also, I served as the CEO for the first year of that organization's existence. I was involved in a similar study in Fresno County with another consulting organization, where there was an intensive look at the potential for forming a joint agency between the City of Fresno and the City of Clovis. And then, more recently, in 2010, in Solano County, I was again involved in the transition process with the formation of a new joint powers authority, which combined the services of the City of Vallejo and the City of Benicia. And that was another case where I was offered the opportunity to be its first CEO for the first year, but had a competing offer in Southern California and took that, so I didn't actually run that agency for the first year. We'll talk a minute here now about what the current structure is for transit in Calaveras County. So, at the moment, the county is responsible for all transit-related activities. They are responsible for things ranging from route planning to oversight of the operations contract, because the, the service itself is contracted to a private company to operate. The county is responsible for all capital projects and holds the assets that are associated with the transit system. The COG administers TDA, again, some of you may be familiar with this. That is one of the major funding sources that supports transit. COG manages the unmet transit needs processes as part of the TDA law, and manages various other grant programs as well. And we'll talk a minute how these are going to overlap. The city local transit fund and other funds are currently claimed by the county. So that includes money that would otherwise be dedicated to service with the City of Angels, and it goes directly to the county under the current arrangement.
Sorry, where do the LTF funds come from?
That is part of the state sales tax. There are sales tax-generated funds. Is that more? We can go into detail on some of these things if you'd like, but yes, and that's, it's part of the state sales tax allocated back to the jurisdiction of origin.
And do you know about how much we get every year?
The LTF portion for the City of Angels is roughly 90,000? Okay? The county applies for other operating and capital funds, grants, et cetera, to manage the transit system. Again, the point is, the county is currently responsible for all of this. And the county awards the vendor contract and oversees its performance. It's responsible for day-to-day management of the system. So, why are we looking here tonight at restructuring the transit system? Among the things that have been discussed throughout this formation process is clearly the idea that the City of Angels is really not represented in all that I just described. In the current management of the system, the county decides you're not involved directly in any real advisory or direct management capacity associated with the transit system. The idea with the formation of the JPA is to strengthen the city's role in the decision process. There's a widespread level of interest in that. And to be involved then in decisions regarding money that would otherwise be due the city for, under TDA, for transit purposes. So, again, the point here, as I'll get into in more detail, is to give the city a role in transit decision-making going forward. There are various other reasons, of course, contributing to the suggested formation of this agency. Among those is the current system performance. Transit system performance has been declining in recent years, ridership is down, costs have been increasing. There have been issues about the timely application for funds in order to, or that are associated with certain compliance issues. As an example, the contract that I mentioned that is awarded to a private company to operate the system was subject to renewal sometime past and wasn't done on a timely basis, which seriously jeopardized the availability of funding to the county. And so there's kind of a hurry-up effort going underway right now to accomplish that, to become then compliant and eligible for those funds. Also, in recent years, the county has loaned general fund, funds to manage the transit system, in part because of the timing of some of these decisions for applying for LTF or compliance for grants and so on. And obviously, that causes issues with the county. As I mentioned, so the second-to-last bullet point here, delays in key actions like awarding a contract to a new vendor have jeopardized funding for the county and also, and really put in jeopardy the availability of such things as federal funds, 5311 to be detailed, and also state transit assistance funds. Finally, there have been various studies that have gone on in recent years that have generally recommended certainly reconsideration of this, of the management structure for transit, and really have recommended a restructuring and to move it away from county management. The importance of timing here. City and county officials, again, in our various conversations, have appeared ready to take on something like this. The, the timing is right to accomplish this transition. The Board of Supervisors last Tuesday voted 5-0 in favor of the formation of a new joint powers authority, and in this process relinquish all responsibility for transit management. A, a major step. Correction of the compliance issues is critical, as I have now referenced a couple times, in order to maintain compliance for funding. The new transit vendor contract that's currently in process is scheduled to begin April 1. And so, there is an opportunity now for a new joint powers authority, and I'll talk about the transition to this in a minute, but to be involved in that, that contract, which again is the single major expense of the system, and to use that new contract as an opportunity to reevaluate the deployment of transit services in the county. Obviously, the county desires to end its loan from the general fund to this, yes?
So if they end the loan from their general fund, where's that loan going to come from if we do a JPA?
Well, certainly, the expectation would be there wouldn't be a loan in the future. Because the loan has been necessitated by the timing of applications for funding. LTF has not been applied for on a timely basis, which is available. And so, could have prevented the use of general funds to support the system. And the same with grants, as I've mentioned, say, associated with the vendor contract, that would prevent the need for a loan such as this. Most agencies like this don't borrow funds the way the county has been loaning funds to manage the transit operation, the cash is available.
It just, there was an audit done, and it was the mismanagement and the timing of the application, because they couldn't meet the deadline, the county had to cough up the dollars that he's talking about. If with this, because the timing would be right, we wouldn't have to worry about, about that.
Whose responsibility was it to see that those things were formed timely? Was it an individual, was it a position that was vacated, was it, what was the reason for that?
It's probably a myriad of reasons associated with the, among other things, the workload of the county staff. And so, it has not happened on a timely basis. And, an example, the LTF funds could have been available as far back to July 1, and they've not been made available yet by a valid claim for those funds. And so, it's for reasons like that that the county has had to step in with the general fund and provide the operating cash to support the system. There will be a transition period associated with this new formation effort. Again, I'll talk about the specific dates in a minute. But during that transition period would be when legal agreements and so on would be changed from county responsibility to the new JPA. Other things like assigning staff and establishing the other business protocols that are required to manage an operation like this would also occur during that transition period.
Would the JPA staff be larger or smaller than the staff allocated from the county right now to run this?
Can I answer that in a minute?
Sure.
I'll get to that, and I, and then if I haven't adequately explained it, re-ask the question. And then, same with transferring liability or responsibility. All of that is intended to be accomplished by July 1, so that with a brand-new budget year, the JPA would take over and be responsible for its own budget, and for things like the TDA claim that would be effective July 1.
Due, the filing for that is due when?
Filing normally occurs late spring, to be available for July 1.
So the assumption is that if something happened with all parties agreeing by July 1, that everything would be in place and timely and completed?
Yes, and the...
But it hasn't been before?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, I'll get into that in just a second.
All right.
So, I mean, this gets closer to your question, and I'll get even closer to that in a minute. But the steps leading to the formation really began, as the staff report indicated, back in late summer, August, September period, when appointees were selected by the city and by the county to serve on a policy group to explore all the issues associated with this formation process. I was retained, as Amber mentioned, effective November 1, to step in and help guide the process and to work with the policy group and all the other associated parties in this process. So I've been doing that since. The policy group back in November agreed on what's referenced there as guiding principles, and they're stated in the transition plan that was included in your agenda packet tonight. And the point of that really was to have the parties to the policy group. So it included Linda Herman from your council, two members of the Board of Supervisors, your then-CEO, the CEO of the county, and CEO of the COG, that was the policy group, agreed on a list of guiding principles. And I'm not going to bother to go through all of those in detail, but simply to say that, very importantly, the point was made of, I think the first of those, that the intent of the group was to form a JPA, to assume responsibility for the transit system. And then, there were other principles supporting that, to accomplish it with the formation by April 1, with the full takeover by July 1, and then a sort of pledge for the agencies involved to work together collaboratively to make this happen. Everybody agreed, it was unanimous agreement, that those principles should guide the process, and they have. The policy group guided the drafting of the JPA agreement itself. The agreement, again, is in your packet. It's presented for you tonight for approval. There was certainly considerable discussion at the policy group level of the JPA agreement, different approaches, and I should say, too, many comparisons to other joint power authorities that are transit agencies around the state, because this is certainly not the first time this has happened. And so there's been a lot of work put in by the policy group agreeing on the final language in the JPA agreement. Once that was done, the agreement was sent to all of the legal councils of the various participants for their review, and various comments and so on were incorporated into the final agreement, which, again, was presented to the Board of Supervisors last week to you tonight. The policy group obviously recommended adoption of the JPA agreement. So what are some of the expectations of this outcome? Obviously, an important one, and it's been emphasized a couple times, I think it's important to emphasize again, is involvement by the city in transit decision-making. You know, the city has not really had a formal role in this to date. There are decisions that have been made virtually unilaterally by the county, and there's obviously interest by the city in doing this. The other thing here that is, I think, important to stress is that the idea here is to form a new legal entity to manage transit in the county. Right now, all of that, I've said before, about the way it's structured under county management today, means that it's one of many, many things that the Board of Supervisors is responsible for, and the Public Works Department, as the agency within the county responsible for making things work, has that added to its list. And so, obviously, the county and, within the county, the Public Works Department is responsible for a huge list of responsibilities, huge list of programs, a huge list of projects, transit being one of them, and transit really not being a very large one in the big scheme of things. This is an opportunity to put together an agency dedicated to transit. This agency would be responsible for transit. It would have one function. That's what would, from certainly a governance perspective, greatly change the way things are done today. Among other things, hope that are expected out of this process, really, would be to streamline the application process, to introduce certain efficiencies at the staff level, introduce efficiencies ultimately in service delivery, and generally increase the accountability and transparency of the whole transit program in the county. Again, a lot of that having to do with the fact that it would be the one function of a dedicated agency. Now, I think I might be getting back to your question, sir, about the staffing issues and so on. So, to talk a minute about the relationship between the new transit JPA and Calaveras COG. You would have seen in the agreement before you that the intent in establishing a new joint powers authority is, the governance structure for that is proposed to be the same as for the COG. So if you're a member of the COG board, you're a member of the transit agency board. Same with the officer positions, COG positions, same with the JPA. The fact is, they would be separate legal entities. It is not one organization, so, in effect, the COG with its board takes care of COG matters, and depending on how the meeting structure is set up, that board changes hats and becomes the transit agency board. And again, I would emphasize that that is not new. That structure exists elsewhere in the state. There are other, even nearby counties, that are structured that way.
Are there other areas where taking this step has improved the situation? I kind of feel like I'm being asked to catch a falling knife, and I can't get over that feeling. So, what other areas has this improved that situation that's in my mind?
All right. There have been certainly a number of joint powers authorities formed around the state over the years. There are quite a few transit agencies that are JPAs, and so they're multi-jurisdictional. And there are others really under evaluation today, and, I mean, I used a couple of my own personal examples in my credentials, where decisions were made at that point that it was going to be greatly more efficient to create a joint powers authority of multi-jurisdictions than to continue whatever the structure was at that time, like in the eastern Sierra when Inyo County was the responsible party for transit services, even though it was operating beyond its own borders. And it was decided that there could be efficiencies, which now, over these years since, have certainly proven to be true. A case like Solano County with Vallejo and Benicia, there were some immediate efficiencies there, because they used the same contractor and were able to get some efficiencies by combining contracts. So there are a lot of things that happen unique to each jurisdiction situation that result from the formation of a JPA like this. And so here, again, I think more pertinent to the question you asked a little bit ago about staffing and what happens with that, and is there more or less staff. The proposed approach to staffing here is dramatically different from what's happening today. Again, today, it's county public work staff, spread very thin, doing many, many things that are responsible for transit management. Under this new approach, the idea is that staff services will be obtained through COG. And so that's going to, and that streamlines things dramatically, based on other work I've done elsewhere, where there's a whole new staffing organization created. So staff services are proposed to be purchased by the JPA from the COG. And among the efficiencies in that is the fact that the COG staff, I should say, currently spends a great deal of its time on transit-related activities. They manage the various grant activities. They manage the LTF process. They're responsible for a lot of the planning activities, so those plans referenced earlier were really under the auspices of COG. And so there's already a tremendous amount of work happening in transit right now by the COG. The idea here is to use those services and add strength to that staff. There's a vacant position that's proposed, it's discussed in the transition plan, to be filled, to really take on much of the transit management responsibility. All of that is likely, and, I mean, the budget work we've done so far, looks like it will result in savings in actual staff expense. And part of the reason for that is that because of the way the county finances are structured, there are overhead charges that are basically automatic to the transit budget because of their responsibility to manage, and that sort of thing will go away under the new management structure. So there aren't charges like that associated with COG shared staffing under a program like this. All this will be housed at the COG. I mean, there's going to be a new office for this. Again, compared to what staffing there is at the COG today, there's only going to be one position added to the organization, and that position, too, will be shared between COG planning activities and JPA management activities. So, I hope that answers the question you asked a little bit ago.
So, the initial premise, that one person adding on and synergies with the rest of the COG, that in the plan is going to improve decision-making and improve efficiencies?
The combination of that structure at the staff level and, of course, the board level is where the improvement comes in decision-making.
It's all about staff, though. The board's a transient board. People, board members come and go, so it's really is about the staff, right, making that decision? So, okay, go ahead.
All right, so one more point about that. One of the other key differences here in the approach to management is the fact that while some other county staff people have been involved in transit activities, there has been a county transit manager responsible for most things. This organization structure is proposed to be a fully shared responsibility among several staff people, each with duties associated with the JPA. And you can see from the, I know you probably can't read it on the slide there, it's in your transition plan. You know, there's an estimated amount of time by the various positions at COG dedicated to transit management, and then, again, the new position is proposed to be at least half-time. That'll all be managed through a time-record process, so charges will be associated to the JPA through that process. But anyway, the expectation is that the combination of the activities of that group of people will more than offset what the county is able to currently do under its structure in the Public Works Department. Does that hopefully answer your question?
Still trying to figure out why you need the city to do all that. Okay. My overriding concern in all this is, right now, the city's liability, if I understand this right, is limited to the LTF funds. There's no way that county transit issues can come back and force us to make loans out of our general fund or spend any general fund money at the current time.
Right.
This formation of the JPA, what does that, now the city's a co-owner of this JPA, we have another one that does our water and our power, and we're short funds, we go to our members and we say, hey, we need money. So the city writes a check, our members write checks. So I'm concerned in getting involved in this is, is that a possibility here? And if it's possible, why on earth, for a little bit of say in a transit that doesn't really get a lot of use and is declining use, why on earth would we open ourselves up to that kind of liability?
This same question came up last week at the county and along similar lines. And the real point here is that things happen now you don't have any involvement in. Your money goes there, you have no real say in how it's spent. The fact is, this is going to be a new, separate legal entity, and so it means that the responsibilities of this joint powers authority don't flow back to the county or the city. It is responsible for its own finances and its own management. As I mentioned earlier tonight, the idea that, unfortunately, things have been managed recently such that it has triggered the county to provide general fund loans. That is not a normal circumstance in agencies like this. You know, having worked with several, I've never worked with one before that ever experienced that. The funds that are available to support transit here, as is generally the case elsewhere, are available largely in advance. The biggest portion of the funds, the LTF funds, the single largest funding source for this, are basically available in advance, such that, at the beginning of the year, funds are available to cover ongoing costs. Certain expenses are reimbursable through some of the grant options, but again, typically the cash available through LTF and some other sources, but that's the big one, are very sufficient to cover the normal expense pattern throughout the course of a year. And so there really is no expectation any time in the future that there will be the necessity for the new JPA to borrow funds from either participating jurisdictions or to go out in the market and borrow funds to manage its operation. There's no expectation of that. And in fact, in now having mentioned a couple times tonight, the idea of improving the process for things like the timeliness of LTF claim submittal, we expect to be able to do that on a very timely basis. Again, this is unusual here, not to have an LTF claim done and approved and with money flowing by July 1. But unfortunately, for various reasons, it hasn't happened for years. And if that, and the presumption certainly is that we can make that happen by July 1 this year, then your concern should go away.
If it does qualify and should, and that's enough, that really is enough for me to, because I'm wary about depending on money from a bankrupt state or from a county that's got its own issues and from the federal government's got its own issues, when, to me, any possibility to increase our liability, we can't handle writing a $200, $1,000 check. If, again, that same thing that just happened, happened again, things aren't getting better fiscally for government entities, they're getting worse. I personally would rather see the transit kaput than take a chance to have and use our general fund money to even provide a loan to an entity. And I know how hard it is when you're a member of a JPA and you're representing the city, and your mission is to keep transit running, and how hard it is to say, no, we can't write that check. And the pressure on the council to write that check is huge. I'd rather say no now before it gets to that.
Might mention then one more thing, hopefully, to address your point. The expenses and revenues associated with a transit operation are not mysterious. They're known. You know, you know, going into the beginning of a budget year, virtually everything you're going to spend. I mean, the only thing that could come along, probably, and may have in previous years, that would really change that comment would be some radical fluctuation in fuel prices, which that hasn't happened in a long time. The fact is, you know your expenses going in. You also know your revenues going in. And if you manage those properly, like the other sister JPAs around the state typically do, you don't end up with problems like the county have. If the county had been managing its financial situation, I'll say, properly, in recent years, we wouldn't be having that conversation right now. You would not even be addressing the issue of loans from a general fund, because they wouldn't have happened. They shouldn't have happened. They have, but they shouldn't have, and other agencies don't do that, because they know their expense pattern and they know their revenues. And all of those are available to serve this purpose. And again, I think that is important to understand that the staffing structure that is being put in place with this, that's going to be the shared services of the transit JPA and the COG, is the expertise that's needed to keep these things accomplished on a timely basis. It really will.
I have been part of the committee, and I feel strongly that, from my understanding of it, it is something that's very secure, and it has been a management problem, not a financial problem. And so with the improvement in management, you know, you'll be able, we'll be able to function within the budget. I really don't see anything that would take us outside that budget. I think also, I mean, again, I think with COG taking that and the various responsibilities that they can spread around and then hiring the one other person, it should be able to fulfill all the responsibilities. I really feel strongly. Also, one other thing, I do think, I mean, I think transit, if we aren't going to go into that, which I agree, you know, then transit, I think, is a very important service to our community, and there's a lot more that we could do in Angels Camp with the transit system where we have influence, so that we can have things where we have more stops in Angels Camp that would really provide for a much better service to the people who come to the community and who are tourists, we're able to bring them around and take them around, besides providing also for the transit in the county, you know, that would be helpful.
I remember it was five or six years, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Five or six years ago, I served on the COG, and we had presentations from the county transit. And back then, the line was, well, we're under new management now, it's going to be much better, and we're cutting our costs down to the bare bones. I'm looking at financials where costs had gone up 64%.
I'm looking at financials where costs had gone up 64% over a three-year period. They said, oh, it's all on fuel costs. And fuel costs allowed for about 20% of that, but not the rest. The rest was, I don't know, maintenance issues or it was, you know, payroll going up and this type of thing. We weren't meeting our fare box recovery ratios or whatever that term was. And there were just nothing but problems and problems and management was so competent at the time and so I'm hearing the same type, well, it's just a management issue, when it's really, I think, more of a systemic issue of trying to provide, you know, mass transit in a rural area. It's just a very difficult thing to do. You know, I don't know that we need more stops in Angels Camp. We can walk just about anywhere in town without a whole lot of difficulty. So, it helps, it helps very few people for a very lot of money and that money's going up and the ridership's going down. And I'm just, I don't see, I can't support this.
Can I say something?
Of course you can.
I'm going to let Joe propose, but I want to, no, I want to explain an example of why and why we're here and how this came about, but I want Joe to ask his question first.
Well, it's kind of along the same lines as what Scott's saying. Everything that you're pointing to suggests we're going to efficiently drive a bunch of empty buses around. I haven't heard anything said about ridership. It's dropped 54%. There's nothing in the data here that says how you fix that, that's number one. Number two, in the restructure, basically, you're going to outsource most of the operational costs and you're acknowledging that's going to drive the cost up. You're going to tell the contractor, find a facility, find your own mechanic and do all the maintenance. All that drives it up and there's a statement in here that says, over the long haul, the JP will experience a downward trend in that expense. Given that structure, I don't see how that's possible. And in fact, with contract maintenance like that, in a competitive bid arrangement, you could well end up with somebody that just walks away from it because they can't deal with it, or you just end up with somebody that can't perform because of the structure of this thing, having to have their own facilities, having to have their own personnel to do the maintenance. So, the whole thing makes me wonder, are we legally bound to provide transportation in the county? We are.
Basically, yes.
But it doesn't have to be in bus form.
It has to be a transit system.
It does.
Yes, public transit. So, if I might, I'm sorry.
No, go. And that's exactly what I want to, we're required by law to do that. And the more that we are not doing that, it also affects all of our other grant funding to match or get other transit related, outside of the bus system that you're thinking of, done. And, you know, we have, over and over again, constantly have provided suggestions to the county from a city standpoint to improve what they are failing at and this has been the best option over the last year that we have come up with, with Linda being on this board and it's been, our funds are in jeopardy outside of just the LFT. I mean, we're, what they're doing directly affects us to do any other matching such as SB 1 or any other thing. So, I think it's important to really consider what he's presenting in front of us because it's a chain reaction that will not be in our favor at all. If we don't, if we don't go and look at this with seriousness and...
Well, that's something, if there's something specific that comes back and says, if we leave things as they are, don't make this change, this could hurt us in X, Y, Z in these ways, then, you know, that's something we need to consider, but that's not presented here.
If I might make two more comments that don't, now, not precisely to that point, but the idea of a transit contractor being the single largest expense associated with this, obviously, it's been operated that way here for many years. Many, many of the transit systems around the country, not even just in California, are done that way. There are very, very large firms that operate contract transit systems like this. And unfortunately, again, because of circumstances at the county, the current RFP for services only elicited one response. And there were reasons for that associated with the way the county, I will say this, and I'm not trying to really bash the county here, but the fact is, the RFP, the way it was put together, really was destined to have only one bidder, the current contractor. The expectation, as we've had discussions of this already leading into the new JPA, would be to give a hard look at that contract, which only has a one-year duration, and probably redo it and re-release it within the first year of the new JPA's operation, in a form that is likely to result in substantial more competition for that, for that contract. And even in the early stages of this contracting process, there were four other firms from around the country that were interested in doing business here. Again, unfortunately, the way the county put the contract together, none of them could really effectively bid right now. You know, it was such a short term, it does require a facility, in this case, it requires a transition of maintenance as well. And so, there were factors that nobody would look at seriously on a one-year basis, other than the incumbent. But a redo of that for a new five-year contract or longer will clearly generate competitive bids. And that's one of the expectations for controlling cost here.
Back to the ridership issue. What's, so it's going to limp along at this declining rate of ridership and so we just treat it like a service that has to be provided and it doesn't matter that it's got no return? Is that kind of what we're saying?
Well, what we're hoping to do with the new JPA and looking at service-related issues is, one, elevate the whole dialogue about transit to the level of a separate governing board responsible for transit, not the board of supervisors that has 100 other items in front of it and transit just, just one. The board of the new JPA would have one purpose and that is to make transit system, the transit system work in Calaveras County.
That's the same board as cog.
Well, that's, see, I got that same problem. Looking at this organizational structure, 75-25, you know, Amber, how do you, how do you dedicate that 25%? How do you know that it's, you know, I've got, I've got to take that task on and stay focused on it? I mean, one day, it's going to be 100% of your time, one week, it's going to be 100% of your time. In my mind, that's how deadlines get missed, that's how the responsibility gets misdirected and that's how you end up with, you know, things that don't get filed on time, with this mixed responsibility kind of a scenario. And then, one final point on that, there's no administrative assistance support at all in this table. So, you know, what happens to the legwork? You know, who does that? And then, I had another point, but I'll get back to it when I think of, go ahead.
So, very quickly on the staff-related issues and then ultimately, planning issues and so on, as I mentioned earlier, the cog staff really spends a lot of its time doing this kind of stuff already. And what would be added to that is management activity associated with overseeing the transit system directly, responsibility the county currently has. And the combination of having a dedicated board with policy responsibility for this, even though the makeup of the board is the same as the cog, that when the board convenes as a transit agency, that's its purpose. Cog too, has a variety of activities, but you sit down as the JPA board, you are sitting there to manage the transit system. And then, with the staff mix of cog, JPA staff, again, those services being purchased from cog, that eliminates various personnel issues and so on, another complication that goes away with this. The combination of the policy level and the staff level, I think, opens the door to really new consideration of service deployment issues. And again, we've had some preliminary discussions of things like this, not that anybody's ready to drop a new transit plan here and tell you what new routes might be and so on, but we have had already conversations about some of the problems of serving a rural county in general and this rural county in particular, and the need to really look beyond traditional transit services, you know, bus routes running up and down on a fixed schedule all day long. There are other alternatives, a lot of other jurisdictions are starting to look at for situations like this, that involve other kinds of service, other technologies, other organizations that could be partners and do some of this, where the JPA, instead of contracting with one service provider, like is done now, where it runs the fixed routes, could instead contract with multiple operators, multiple agencies to do certain very specific things.
That brings me back to the point I wanted to make a minute ago, and that's the assets. What's the status of the rolling stock? Is it owned or is it leased? And number two is, what's the condition of it? And if it's leased, what are the terms of the lease? In other words, are we going to, is this new authority going to take on junk that they have to deal with? Or are they going to take on a lease that's terminating and they got a big cash problem associated with that? What's the status of that in the asset transfer?
All of the assets are owned. None are leased.
And their condition is?
The fleet is relatively new. It's new in recent years, so it's, it's early in its useful life. As it's transitioned for maintenance purposes to the contractor, where now the county provides those maintenance services, there will be an inspection process and identification of any problems the county might have left behind that they'll work out with the new contractor to be resolved. There's really not the expectation that there will be a lot of that, but that's kind of a common practice in situations like this. The assets will eventually be transferred during that initial 90-day period from the county to the JPA. So, the JPA at the end of that 90 days will be the legal owner of those assets. And so, that means, and certainly, the assets mainly consist of the rolling stock, but there are other things. There's some maintenance equipment, there's bus stops and shelters and things like that that ultimately will be transferred also. But again, the rolling stock is the big part.
Where did the funding come for that rolling stock originally?
It's typically more like one-time grants. There's a variety here, as there are most places. You know, if certain funding becomes available, you go out and buy buses with that funding. Different funding becomes available another year, you use that funding that year for buses. And so, that's why you almost never see leased equipment. It's virtually always grant purchased and so it's owned outright. And again, here, there's a variety. You know, buses have been purchased with different grant funds.
What's the, what's the term relatively new mean? Is this stuff seven, eight, 10 years old? Is it...
I want to say that the majority of the fleet here is within three years old. The kind of vehicles that are operated here have a normal service life of seven or more. If you're familiar with what the buses look like running around here, you know, they're not heavy-duty transit buses like you would see in an urban area. They're sort of medium-duty, but a medium-duty vehicle lasts typically about seven years or so.
So, if it's mid, if they're mid-point in their lifespan, so three years from now, the JPA's got to deal with replacement? And that's a grant process, hopefully?
It is, yes. Yes. I mean, certainly, the expectation, and again, this is not unique here. This applies to all transit agencies just like this. They have to look ahead at their replacement cycle and they have to anticipate what they're going to do for that and apply for the necessary grants in order to keep the fleet fresh. And that's pretty routine.
And just one final question. If we were to say, if we were to say no to this, it just simply would stay with the county?
That would be the expectation. It would stay with the county.
Okay.
And that, again, leaves you and the county, more the county, I suppose, with all the problems that are currently being evidenced in the management of the system.
Would that be the only alternative or could the county still consider contracting with the council of governments and the city, potentially looking at providing their own transit service within their local jurisdiction?
You, I suppose, could consider something like that. I mean, hearing the idea that the, you know, the city might consider doing its own thing is...
I wouldn't recommend that, but I'm just wondering, the supervisors voted 5-0 in favor of transitioning the JPA to the Calaveras Council of Governments, so...
To a no, to a JPA, to a new JPA, not to cog.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering about their level of autonomy to, to make a move as the transit operator, to make a move like that independent of the city's endorsement.
It would really be back to the drawing board if that were the case. And really, I think with the work that happened at the policy group level where there was representation, obviously, from here, the expectation is, and I would say even especially in light of the 5-0 vote at the county, that the city would agree with this process, take this action and form this agency and become part, an official part of the dialogue. I mean, really, you're not part of the dialogue now.
We have lost on so many things and this is such a great opportunity for us to finally have a voice and a say, rather than the board of supervisors continuing to vote without ever consulting with our city staff or the council.
And you have to ask yourself why the county votes 5-0 and the bottom line is, this is a, this is an entity that will never produce a nickel for the city. It's a liability, whether it's a negative cash flow, lawsuits, whatever, you know, of course, they're going to say, hey, you guys come in and own it with us. It's in the county's best interest to do this for sure. I don't know that, it's, it's not showing to me that it's in the city's best interest at all. We're representing the people of the city and our general fund and our, the liability is too big for the benefits of having a say about a bus stop in a declining use.
I understand where you're coming from. However, the county is not doing it because of the liability. They're doing it because of the continuous mismanagement of county staff refusing to work with their cooperators, i.e. us and the cog. Over and over, the audit show, it has nothing to do with that, it has to do with the mismanagement. And that, and this, what you have in front of you is to resolve that mismanagement. And if we can put this into play, we will not have the concerns that you're talking about.
It's not resolving any mismanagement. In my mind, all it's doing is hiring one more person to be the manager and the rest is passing, saying, we have a board that's, again, a transient-type board, that's a lot like us, we're not experts in running transit, but we're going, two of us are going to serve on that board and, and it's not going to change the management style or the quality of management at all. We went through a number of managers before and everyone, you know, was better than the predecessor. It's just, I just don't think it's a win. And it's something I don't...
I can see, you know, you're looking at the past and your experiences, but then, with the transit, we're not looking to receive revenue through, we're really there to serve the community. And I didn't know if Amber could share, but she's, the executive director of cog would be the executive director of the transit agency. And I thought maybe we could get some response from Amber about how, do you, do you see this being an overload? Would you be able to manage, you know, that kind of thing? And the thing about cog too, is you're always, the grants and always timely manner that you've been able to, to bring money in.
Sure, I can speak to that. I think some of your concerns, I think, having, building this structure, having a board and a focus forum on transit is very important and that will hold staff accountable for addressing, you know, efficiency issues and other management issues. In terms of the staffing, I think we may have misspoke, but we're not adding a position. It's an existing position at cog that's currently unfilled. So, you're not adding additional staff.
Adding a person, a new person.
So, I think for me, Amber, it's an existing funded position at the Calaveras Council of Governments. And historically, with my experience, there's a lot of overlap between the roles and the functions of the staff of the Regional Transportation Planning Agency and the transit agency. So, that's something that I think that the city will, in the long term, realize real tangible benefits in, in terms of financial impacts, is combining those functions. Because what that'll save to the cog's operations budget is some regional surface transportation funds that I could put to work with my streets and roads department and my public works department, which is in a critical need. I think that this solution also provides us the opportunity to leverage other state and federal funds that we are not aggressively taking advantage of. With the cog's expertise in regional transportation funding, I think there's an economy of scales and some efficiency there that they will be able to provide both the city and the county in the long run. And I think what I've seen in terms of the political influence in the management of a transit system, when you look at five supervisors who oversee that function, no one supervisor wants to cut service to their jurisdiction. So, oftentimes, it's not about decisions that maximize the efficiency of the transit system, which is cutting those routes that don't have riders. system, which is cutting those routes that don't have riders. It becomes a political issue of, do not cut service to my jurisdiction because my constituents will not allow that. So I think with the opportunity for a shared board where you have city and county, and the priority and focus becomes on the efficient management of a transit system, rather than it being a politically motivated board to make sure that there's coverage throughout the county, whether the operational efficient or not, is also in the city's interest financially. Not only do we contribute LTF, we're contributing state transit assistance money, we're contributing transit capital money, we're entitled to our proportional share. And unless we have a say in that decision-making, we don't have the authority to say, yes, we're going to invest transit stops in Valley Springs because that's where the ridership is, or no, we're gonna put an intermodal transit facility in Angels Camp because that's where the ridership is. So right now, we don't have that authority or control. So I think that this is in our interest, both from a long-term financial perspective and from an operational perspective. And I'm really happy to hear Amber clarify that statement about the staffing positions because I think that's where we are going to benefit long-term. We're going to eliminate the county's A-87, which is their organization-wide overhead. We're going to eliminate their department administration. All of those costs are gonna come off the top. We're gonna renegotiate a better, effective contract with the support and expertise of COG staff. And then I think, over the long period of time, we're going to see an operational savings for the city.
Well, I think maybe that's where the presentation needs to be. And maybe we don't vote on this tonight, maybe we come back and show, and I'm speaking for myself, but show me where, in detail, what kind of fiscal benefits there are, because the fiscal impact we have in our report here doesn't state any of that kind of stuff, or it doesn't say it clearly at all. So if there's a reason for us to take this added risk, if there's a reason for us to, you know, to catch the falling night, you know, that's something we can consider. But right now, what I've seen, it doesn't, we represent the citizens of Angels Camp, and we are, I just don't want to put us in any situation where there could be a lawsuit for transit, a transit lawsuit, or there could be a cash flow issue where all of a sudden, we're putting it up, or we have to write a check, or else we have to close down our buses. We can't close the buses, you have to have buses. So it's basically, if there's a negative, it's gonna come back on the city. And I know it's rare, but things are getting worse, not better, in the government fiscally. So I just don't think, I haven't seen anything that makes that risk worth taking. And again, that's just me. I don't know if I've got votes to back me up on this or not, but, you know.
If I might clarify with the JPA, Amber, the JPA is solely responsible to sue and be sued. It's a completely separate, independent agency. So if sued is the transit agency, could the reach extend to the member agencies based on the decisions of that joint powers agreement?
And that's specifically the reason why JPA's are formed, is to limit the liability to create a separate entity. So the liability aside, I think the practical effect you're alluding to is, well, it's hard to turn down when you're asked to fund, but from a legal perspective, they are wholly separate from a liability perspective.
I think, too, from my perspective, with the city participating in the joint powers agreement, if we anticipate and see deficits, we cut service. So it's not that we have to fund the system in perpetuity as it's been operating. I think we hear from the presentation, there's a recognition that innovation and service alternatives needs to be part of the discussion. So I think for the first part, as Amber's alluded to, we have a contract that we're dealing with in terms of wrapping up that final year under the current contract, but there's potential moving forward. And I think then it becomes incumbent upon the JPA and through staff to now start managing that system effectively in a way that it hasn't been. So from my perspective, it's not that the liability is necessarily there, because now we will have the authority to cut the system and services accordingly based upon funding availability, rather than borrowing money from the member agencies, which I would not see as an alternative or a recommendation to even support. The other question, I do have the cash flow perspective. Are you guys preparing for the cash flow scenarios?
Yeah, I think, you know, just how COG functions, we have to prepare a reserve up to, you know, maybe three months of operating, you know, based on the revenues that you anticipate that year. And so, you know, you look out in the revenues that you anticipate, and if they're going down, well, then you need to start evaluating what certain levels of service that you provide. You can't, you know, start incurring costs that you will not receive, so. And I think just looking at the example of your JPA that's formed, the Calaveras Council of Governments, to my knowledge, the council of governments has never come to its member jurisdictions for funding, and they've managed their cash flow efficiently and effectively with very similar grant funds.
Amber, in your process here, do you envision that the COG meeting adjourns and the JPA meeting begins with its own agenda separate from? Is that the way it would operate?
Yeah, that's what we anticipate, the way it would operate.
And on COG, on COG, you know, there's two supervisors, two city council members, and then there's two citizen members. So we have a good blend of representation.
Amber, do you know the amount that we contribute to the system, all inclusive of all the revenue sources, of the proportional share?
I have not calculated that specifically in terms of all the revenue services that are dedicated to transit systems. We could, if, you know, all the revenue sources get allocated differently. Some are based on population, some are based on service levels and revenues generated by the transit system. So I guess in a case of the city had their own transit system, they would be eligible for the different capital funds and other operating funds that go into the system. So the LTF is the easiest one, just because that's a quarter percent of the statewide sales tax returned to the jurisdiction that it was generated from.
Okay.
And I had a question about, so the Streets and Roads and some of that money can, if it's an overflow, or, I don't know the terminology, but that also can be brought for the county and to the city?
Yes. Yeah, the city and county typically will get, you know, what we are termed excess LTF after, you know, that all the transit needs are met. If there's additional LTFs, then, you know, the city and county can claim it for Streets and Roads purposes or bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure purposes. And, you know, we've seen in the past four years or so, that hasn't been very consistent, and the cities received from zero to $44,000. So I think, you know, the anticipation with the budgeting of the transit system is to make it more consistent so that the city could then can budget and really anticipate what revenues they might receive.
So there is revenue.
And that's the part I have a hard time, again, costs are going up, ridership's falling. I have a hard time envisioning a situation where we can make that big of an impact. This new person, when I say a new person, I don't mean new money, I mean a new body, a new brain. You know, someone who's an expert at this, and they come in, and they're a superstar, what can they really do? And I don't see, I just don't, I've seen some pretty good managers before, you know, they talk the good game, but they're dealing with what they gotta deal with.
Yeah, and I think what we're showing in terms of the costs have been increasing has been a lot of admin overhead cost. And so at the county, there's a lot of different layers of overhead costs. So transitioning to this JPA would eliminate all of those overhead costs. It would be direct staff costs from the COG. So you would immediately see cost savings and staff consolidation through this JPA.
And what would be the, you know, the economic impact or the pressures for the city because of those excess funds that would now be available?
In terms of economic development, I guess there's different things, but, you know, you would have more control in terms of how much transit services are provided to the city, what that might look like. A lot of different regions treat transit differently. Some just dedicate it solely to transit-dependent populations. Some might tailor it towards tourism and, you know, use it as an economic generator for your community. In terms of, you know, the money that might come back, it's, it just really depends on how efficiently you can utilize your existing funds and how much might come back to the city for Streets and Roads or other purposes.
Which, then, for an example, we have a budgeted line item for Streets and Roads. We could then match some of those funds to continue that, continue that in the city with their budget.
Yes.
And again, that's not presented, that's not presented here. I'd like to see some numbers, if that's, if we want tables till another time when some numbers could be produced. You know, I see sentences like, you know, reliance on LTF funds to support the, you know, it talks about here, fewer riders translates to less fare revenues collected, which further impacts the reliance on LTF funds to support the system. If you can't rely on the funds to support the system, those ones we're providing, then what funds do you rely on? And that's my point going into this. I see bad things coming. I see a situation where we're gonna be under a lot of pressure to fund the system. And I just think that's, I just think that's huge.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of different elements, and I think really the point of forming this joint powers agency and having that one independent body, that leadership body over transit services in the county, and having a forum for transit, you know, for regular reporting and regular updating and addressing efficiency issues is really critical, and having that accountability to address the issues. Right now, you have no accountability. The COG board, you know, makes efficiency recommendations. We do a lot of the service planning, but in the end, really, the county's responsible for the implementation of services. So, you know, right now, there's really, there's that, we're missing that gap right there of accountability. And so I think the intent's to build a long-term solution to that issue and build that structure that can hold the system accountable.
Well, let me do that to the last slide that you still need to finish, right?
I can. So, again, just to bring us back to what we hope might happen tonight, the county, again, agreed to this a week ago, it's before you tonight for that decision. If that happens, the expectation is that the agency will be legally formed and in place and ready to begin functioning by April 1, and that by July 1, it will effectively take over responsibility for the entire system. And there are many things during that transition period in the three months that have to do, as I've touched on, with legal agreements and so on, the biggest of those being the operating contract. All that would be accomplished in that three-month period. That was the plan. That was what the policy group adopted as part of its guiding principles. Those dates were determined quite some time back, and so that was, that was the plan for this process. I don't know if I need to go into much detail. We probably covered most of these things on the last slide about transition tasks. One way or another, we've covered most of these. Again, the vendor contract, the asset transfer, agreement for COG services. Another is the establishment agreement with the county for auditor treasurer services. That's the way COG manages its finances today, so that would be similar under the new arrangement because it's, it already exists. The county auditor, we've met and discussed this with, county auditor's fully supportive of this approach. Development of plans, just to make sure that the required funding and so on is done on a timely basis, the grant applications are done, is huge. It isn't happening now. In my work with the COG staff and the, the kind of experience the COG staff has, which is typical of other councils of governments I work with, they're fully prepared to do these kinds of things and keep it timely and not result in the exposure that you keep bringing up, and I know is important, about the county's general fund being exposed to this. And I think the new structure will make that go away. And then we haven't, as the policy group or any other participants in this dialogue to date, really gotten into service deployment issues. I mean, there are so many other things to deal with here, first, to get the structure in place to work with, and then we'll get into service deployment issues. And some of these things that I mentioned about sort of non-traditional approaches to delivering services, you know, that really deal with the people who need transit the most and how to effectively reach them. And there are things emerging today that I think would likely be more, under more serious consideration under the new arrangement than under the current arrangement. So that concludes the presentation. I know we've taken a lot of questions, certainly if there are more, we'll...
What's the status of the missing person on staff that is gonna be hired? Is that, is that, is there somebody in the queue for that? Is there, it's...
We're currently recruiting.
And you're recruiting for the position of transit director or transit, or are you looking for someone that would wear more than one hat?
It'd be a transportation planner, which currently, you know, the requirement is...
It's the one that's 75/25?
It'd be a transportation planner position, but the requirements of that position, you know, require transit expertise, and, you know, currently that would fall under, you know, the job description of the current position.
Currently, as they exist, the transportation planner for the Calaveras Council of Governments does a considerable amount of transit planning. Currently, as it exists, the administrative services officer does a lot of financial monitoring for the transit system. So in terms of operational efficiency, it is a fit for the JPA to contract with COG staff because there's already a considerable amount of overlap in those functions. That being said, those functions don't go away if the JPA doesn't exist. COG still has the responsibility to provide those, those functions. It's just that there's a natural nexus, and which is a reason why I think other agencies of similar size have gone with the joint powers agreement. I think there's an efficiency to be realized there.
I was gonna turn it over to public comment. And then we can come, bring it back? Okay. Any public comment? None? Okay. Oh.
No. I've been waiting.
So Debbie Pawnee, so I'm speaking on behalf of a Calaveras County citizen and someone who runs Destination Angels Camp here in town, and a myriad of other things, but most importantly, also served on the council and the county board of supervisors. And this has been something that's irritated me for quite some time. I never did believe that this transit system believed, belonged within the management of Calaveras County. It is poorly managed. It's not a priority. It's not a great concern to the greater good of the county and the city. There have been many studies, and most studies show that we should be doing something like this. We need our own JPA. We need a legal entity that just handles transit. We need the management and expertise that just handles transit. We have tried to take this transit system that has worked in urban areas and cram it down the throats of a rural area. It's time that we take a step back and look at this as a JPA that concentrates solely on transit. There are many opportunities for all of Calaveras County and the City of Angels to benefit from this, but we don't think out of the box. So I look at my partners on both sides of the county. They do something very similar. They have a city within a county. City of Sonora has a wonderful little transit city for their city. It could very well work here for the City of Angels Camp. I look at Amador County. One of the things that I really like about that is in the more remote rural areas of Amador County, they do a dial-a-ride program. You know, so you don't have a big bus going up a road and only three people riding it. You look at what other joint ventures they have done, and they think out of the box. They contract with other kinds of agencies and services that might do a little bit of transportation, and together, they're stronger. We don't do that here. We try to have this one big transit system and try to make it work for everybody, and it doesn't work that way. So I strongly encourage the council to take a look at this. There are opportunities to increase our ridership, to be more financially responsible for the dollars we have. And if we don't do some level of transit here in our city, we lose big time, thousands upon thousands of dollars for other kinds of transportation-type funding avenues. And these studies have been done. You don't have to recreate the wheel. The study that Scott, you mentioned about where the money, if we don't do transit, where the money goes? This was asked of COG staff to do about three years ago. I'm sure the numbers changed a little bit, but you really saw, if you gave up transit altogether, the loss to our communities overall was tremendous because everybody piggybacks on everybody else. And so it's really important to take a look at that, and I agree with you. But there was a study done for that because that was a very specific question being asked when it was thought like, let's get rid of transit. It's the big black hole. It loses money. Nobody rides it. Now, it's for Destination... Now, as for Destination Angels Camp, it would be a tremendous boost for our tourism to get our tourists from one place to the other. When I look at people trying to get jobs and see how many people walk just in front of my office every day, we have like two stops in Angels Camp. It does not fit the transportation needs of our residents. They don't go to the visitor center. Yeah, they go to Save Mar, but they go to all areas of town. And if we had something that was more smaller and unique to meet our citizens' needs, you would see a difference. And I just ask, how many of you have ridden the transit bus? You should. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment before I bring it back? Okay, thank you.
Any other?
I want to, I think I'd like to motion. I'd like to move approval of a transit joint powers agreement between the City of Angels Camp and the County of Calaveras, forming the joint powers agency with full power of own, operate, and administer a public transportation system for the County of Calaveras.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Yeah, a little discussion. I'd like to say one more thing in response to Debbie. There have been a number of different management entities to try to deal with all the problems that are, are evident in our transit system. This proposal, to me, it shows kind of this, other than cutting some admin costs through the county that, I'm not quite sure what the, how much that is, but you're going, you're going to appoint a board that's going to meet after another meeting. It's going to be a long night. They're going to be tired for every single one of their JPA meetings. And then you're going to hire another person to do a, a traffic management type thing, but not a real specialist, not a rock star, not someone who's going to think outside the box and change everything. So all this really does to me is it has an initial pop of, of maybe cutting some county costs. Again, don't know the dollar amounts, but it doesn't really change the management of it. It doesn't really, I haven't heard anything today that says, these are some new ideas, these are some fresh things we need to explore. I don't have the confidence that this is going to do the job of, of, of solving that problem. So if there was a better, you know, if I'm an investor and you're presenting a, a business to me, if this is Shark Tank and you're saying, I'd like you to invest, you know, buy half of my business, you got to tell me why it's going to do better with me in there than it is, you know, without me. And I don't see how having the City of Angels Camp involved in this um, is going to help the management of the system. I just, I don't see that. So I think what this is, is it's a, it's a way to try to change things up, to throw something against the wall, see if it sticks, see if it comes out better, and without specific, uh, rewards, I don't see it worth the risk or the hassle to deal with.
Any other comment? Do you have a response for that?
No, no more comments.
Okay, is there a vote? Uh, do you want to do roll call? Okay, so we will do roll call and we will start.
Aye.
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 No.
Passes for one. Um, okay, uh, next on our agenda, we have Resolution 1807, a resolution authorizing the city administrator and the mayor to sign an agreement with Larry Bane, JPA, to conduct audit services for the fiscal years ending in 2018 and 19 at a cost of $22,600 per year. And this is with Milton, there you are, with Milton.
Good afternoon again. It's obvious that, uh, Larry is a knowledgeable human being. He's a good resource. We have a whole lot of new people in the administrative management, uh, particularly in the financial area. Bringing in a new auditor, um, after all the negotiation that goes on with that, uh, would require a significant effort, having been through that several times in my career. I would recommend, at the cost, uh, that has already been negotiated, that you approve his contract.
How's this compared to the last year's cost and so forth?
Same.
Same.
Is there any other comment? Is there a public comment?
Okay.
Um, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Beal, second by Councilmember Oliver. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. No?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, the Finance Officer Employment Contract. Melissa.
Thank you. I'm very happy to offer for the council's consideration, uh, the ratification of the city administrator's appointment of Summer Nekotero to the position of Finance Officer and authorize the execution of the employment agreement as attached. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about Summer Nekotero or the agreement as included.
Any comment?
Public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to ratify the agreement with-
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, Agenda item number eight, Consolidated Staff Report. Um, in our packet, we have, um, A and B. One is the Fire Department Incident Log, and B is the January 2018, um, distribution.
Thank you. I have, uh, no additional information to add to the consolidated staff report. Department heads are here, uh, in attendance if there are any questions from the council regarding this item.
Right here.
No.
Okay. Moving on. Uh, Danny Pavel comment? Nope, okay. Uh, item number nine, uh, council report. I will start with my last with Councilmember Matoti.
Attended the museum, uh, meeting. Just looking at, uh, Living History Days, 75 people attended. They're recruiting for a museum clerk, which is part-time maintenance and customer service. Lots of groundwork being done, taking advantage of the, of the good weather. There's a sponsorship of $1,000 from the, um, garden club for botanical signs for four different trees on the property. Um, they're also looking at their, um, five-year plan and, and getting that together. The end. Oh, and they're, they're, uh, looking also at, uh, dinner, uh, fundraiser September 8th at the Utica Mansion.
I better put that on there.
Yeah, you're going to get a speaker.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Oliver?
Uh, also, we attended the museum commission, and they're still looking for, um, commissioner. So if anybody's got a lead on that, that'd be helpful. And then just a comment on, you know, Kim's report and the consolidated thing is always pretty good and in a lot of great detail, so I commend her on that. I also attended, um, Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting. I come away with some concerns about our participation in that. I went a long time without having any meetings at all. Uh, and then the two that I have attended, um, haven't seen much that really makes it way back to Angels Camp. So I'm going to continue, um, you know, participating in that, but going to engage in some meaningful research about what that really, what we really get out of that and bring it back to the council. That's it for me.
I have no report.
One I do want to, uh, mention on what does Angels get. Um, we get the new, uh, we are benefited by the new center that is currently over, um, in San Andreas that provides business, um, opportunities, and it is catered to the, um, Angels Camp businesses. We also get grants on, um, Debbie mentioned this, uh, earlier about the, um, presentation that she had. Um, we do get grant money from that. Um, I don't know where the status is currently with this year's fiscal, um, but last year we had classes that were catered, uh, whether it be social media, business, um, that does go to, uh, Destination Angels Camp. Um, so we do have, uh, some benefits. I think we just don't get it explained to us when they do happen. So I'm actually excited to be hearing them more, that, um, when she, when you discuss them, but I know that, um, we do have grant funding, but it's up to the city to make sure that we ask for them, and it gets back to Destination Angels Camp.
This juncture has not been made clear to me that those processes exist.
Okay.
And, and the class grants that you talk of did not come from that agency?
They were last year. So I don't know where the status is this year, but we had multiple that. Um, I worked closely with Larry to get, to get at Destination Angels Camp.
Uh, Councilman Oliver, I missed the name of the organization you mentioned.
It's Central Sierra Economic Development District.
Okay, all right.
And there is a SED. There is a SED. I don't know if that was presented yet that week at the meeting, but we do have a SED and there are requirements that we, we can grab.
Yeah, as I said, I'll study it more, and if I still have concerns, I'll bring it back to the group.
So, the museum, um, so there's events at the museum, but I'm not getting, I don't know if it's on our calendar, but I was hoping that we could get some of those events added to the council members' calendar, so we know what's happening.
They, they talked about the emails and the lack of, and they, I asked them to check all their emails because I know mine was off by one letter with our, yeah, city attorney's office, and they corrected that. It's like, so it could be that your email's just off. But if we could all double-check that, that'd be great, okay.
I can add those events to the calendar.
And then there were three things that I was hoping that in the future the council could talk about, and we actually discussed it earlier when, um, Councilmember Oliver had mentioned that, um, the legislation and communicating with them. Um, there's three specific bills that I've been curious about hearing from staff. Um, one of them is SB 8227, the other one is SB 35, and the other one is SB 1383. Um, SB 1383 actually got addressed specifically with Cow Waste today. But that is another unfortunate state mandate that we are having to, um, to deal with in response to the, um, deadline of the 2020, um, for recycling compost. Um, I have, in dialogue with other groups of city members, um, asked about, um, the impact to rural cities because the, we don't have some of the infrastructures that they're mandating us to do. And so it would, I would really like to discuss with council on, um, if we could draft something to, back to Cow Recycle, the state agency, on if there's, because of the area we're at and they're implementing, you know, for example, what they would utilize in San Francisco on a city like us, can there be exemptions? And if not, can we get funding to implement some of these things? Because we don't have the infrastructure to do, we don't have that. It, it's just another one of those wonderful state mandates. And then the other two have to do with the housing.
What?
Um, the housing and homelessness and the development of streamlining development within cities and taking away the local jurisdiction.
So I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed the second SB that you gave.
SB 35.
Okay.
Um, they're all kind of, those two are more intertwined, but they do have direct impact to us because if developers are able to streamline, we are losing the authority to say how those developers can do what they can within our city limits. And that does impact us, especially when we're trying to preserve the historical aspects of our community.
So legal council has notified me that they are, uh, working on preparing a legislative update for city council at the March 6 meeting, and I will make sure that, uh, these bills are included in that legislative update for your consideration.
And then can we also at that meeting discuss how we can get those, because I don't know why you're not getting them, so it's maybe an email fall with the league, but you should be getting updates on these, where they're specifically asking cities to make, um, make responses and, uh, either opposing or supporting some of these things or the impacts that they will have to us.
Okay. And I will check into the list serve.
That's all I have. So, if there is nothing else, we can go to calendars.
I actually have a question for Chief Fordall.
I don't think he heard you. I don't think he heard you.
Chief Fordall?
Veronica wanted to ask a question.
Hi, I, I have a question for you. Um, I, I've had some discussions with people around town in regards to, um, not being able to lock up the bathrooms. Our public bathrooms are being inhabited, um, by homeless people, and of course, the people who are supposed to lock the bathrooms aren't the police. And I was wondering, has any, has there been any development in a positive manner of, of dealing with this issue?
Uh, in fact, yeah, we had a meeting this morning relative to that issue. We've been doing extra patrol checks of, uh, the problem areas that we're aware of. Um, and, you know, this, I can tell you, like, over the last three-day weekend, uh, we've, we didn't have any issues, uh, but we are aware of it. We are keeping an eye on it, and, um, we are, we have a plan that, you know, to address some of the, like, the most recent relevant high-dollar issue was at Gateway Park. Uh, so we have a plan in place to try and address that. Um, I don't want to go into details because I don't want to ruin it, but we are, we're, combined with the extra patrols, we have some other, uh, enforcement measures that we're looking at to try and address some of the issues. That answer, I don't know if that answers your question, but-
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that because I know that a lot of people have been voicing their concerns to me, which of course makes me concerned, especially public safety.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, so-
The two biggest issues that I'm aware of at this time are, are Gateway and then the visitor center downtown. So, and then Utica occasionally has some issues as well, but, uh, those are the, the two biggies that we're kind of focusing on right now.
Well, thank you, and please thank your officers.
Absolutely.
Calendar.
Okay, tomorrow morning, um, 9:00 AM is IRWMA for you. That's from 9 to noon, because we are now on the advisory, advisory board. Um, UWPA at 5:30 on the 27th. The 28th is the Calaveras Visitors Bureau Board Meeting at Aspen Street Architects at 8:30 AM. And then we meet back here for city council on March 6th at 6.
And is there a motion to read one?
Oh, second.
All those in favor, say aye.